Just to be on the safe side, I have a motion to return to the floor.
Second.
Debbie, please call the roll.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker? Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Dr. Colvin?
Yes.
Mrs. Stanford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Brisbane?
Yes.
Okay, now, I'll accept the motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Dr. Colvin?
Yes.
Mrs. Stanford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Brisbane?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Rick, are you going to talk about the air conditioning at Lafayette?
Yes, the air conditioning system at Lafayette is 46 years old, and it decided to stop operating this summer. At 46 years old, you can guess that we have parted and pieced it and gone to the junkyards and every place else you go to get what you can and keep running, and it has problems that we are no longer able to resolve. The timing is very, very difficult in that we don't have board meeting until the end of August. If we choose to want to have some environmentalists in that building for the start of the school, the only process that we can see is we don't have an opportunity to go through formal bidding, which would take at least three, possibly four weeks to go through all those specifications and the advertising and all. So we got quotes from the local companies that do work on this magnitude. We got quotes, which really, when they know that you're getting quotes, you have to believe that that is going to be very, very similar to what a bid price would be, because they are anticipating the possibility of receiving authorization to do the work. The other is that the board meeting for August is scheduled towards the latter part of the month. So really, we're in a situation here that if we choose to replace that unit, we'll need to look at altering the normal course that we go through in a situation where you're going to spend, what's it, $40,000?
$50,000.
$50,000 on anything, you know, the policy being $15,000. So we need to give the school some kind of an answer so they can adjust, but if we were to go ahead and do this... Chris, you talked to all of these companies, and what kind of timeline are they assuring you they could work under?
If we give them the notice to proceed by tomorrow, they believe they can replace the unit and have it operational by the time school starts.
And can you tell the board how much space and what section of the building is affected?
It's the whole east annex of Lafayette High School. That addition was put on in 1968, so it's their original unit, actually, to replace this unit, and I do recommend replacing the unit. If you rebuild it, you're still going to have old parts along new parts, and I think it's... I just don't recommend doing that. But the unit is so large that we actually have to include it in the bid, and they have to cut an opening into the penthouse to lift that, to crane that unit off the roof and put the new unit in. But they do believe, as of this morning, that they could get that installed before school starts.
I don't know what really either policies necessarily or statutes have for emergency conditions and what and who determines what an emergency is, whether this falls under the notion of an emergency. If you're not comfortable proceeding this way, tell us, and then we'll write a formal bid. We'll go to bid, and we'll do all of those not likely... Pretty... Well, it is... We won't have anything for you for August, but we could certainly bring it in in September.
Mr. Chairman, just to hurry the process and get discussion going, I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
You're going to rebuild it, or are you going to replace it?
To the administrative recommendation. Then we can discuss that. Which was to replace. To replace, yes. Just to replace.
Well, I remember when we replaced the one in this room, and it was...
Was there a second to the motion?
I seconded.
Yeah.
Just so we had a discussion.
Okay, Chris.
Do we need to adjust it?
We give a formal bid.
So this seems like about the same price range, and it's kind of a bigger area, so it seems like it's a crazy amount, you know?
I have another question, and that would be, Rick, is this... Could we use bond money? We're making an improvement. Is this a logical thing to use some of the extra bond money for making the improvement, or would this come out of capital improvement?
Depending on how the bond is... How it was read in the...
How the bond was written.
Yeah, it was written before it came on the ballot.
I think it was less than enough that it would include repairs.
Improvements, yes.
Yeah, I think they're responsible. I don't know that.
Well, maybe that'd be something that the administration could look at. If it's possible to use additional bond dollars, that this would be a consideration rather than...
That's a good idea, and I think I like the time frames of where we can get it done before school with nobody there, or they can get in, they can get it done, and so to round that one.
The bond suggestion may be a very good one, because if not, this knocks half of our annual contingency down before school starts.
What is the... Is P-1 group?
P-1 group, yes.
And so they were going to charge us to single up, to rebuild it, and it would cost us to buy it?
That's correct. Yep. That was a complete rebuild, not a partial rebuild, but to completely rebuild it, yeah, it was about $1,000 difference, something like that.
So $4,000 to get a brand-new unit?
Yeah.
Well, not even $1,000, it's about $200.
Yep, it is.
That's a good deal, too, I agree with 59.
Any further questions?
That's reasonable, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion to approve IHP to replace that unit. Debbie, please call the roll.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Dr. Colvin?
Yes.
Mrs. Brisbane?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Stanford?
Yes.
The next item is backup software and recovery program. Again, we're going through this process, and I don't worry you're going to have a board policy committee, and hopefully, one of the things we will address is all of the purchasing rules, regulations, and how we want to operate as we go forward. We went ahead and pulled some examples for you today that shows some of the various types of purchasing that goes on that is above $15,000, but we have operated differently with a number of these, because it has always been our understanding and belief that capital construction falls under and a purchase of... A tangible, physical purchase. Things like purchase services, software. We've operated for a long, long time with the understanding that if that is a budgeted item, as we build the budget and in our software licensing, is money for backup and recovery software, that that's what's required. So if there's anything that happens relating to that, it doesn't require any board action. Well, we've overcorrected, and what we've done until we know or agree differently is to take everything we can find that's $15,000 or more, regardless of what category it's in or what previous lease we may have had to operate under, and when we get the ground real straight and everybody knows how to go forward, that'll be a great thing. So in the software license amount, it's nearly $1 million a year, and one of the things tucked in there is for this backup software. The product that we currently use is ASIGRA. The Dell product is more robust, it's faster, it's better all the way around, and it's licensed differently so that we have an equal cost to shift from ASIGRA to Dell, and then in previous or following years, we'll save about $8,000 a year. So IT-wise, it's a very good move for us, better product, cheaper. So normally, we would just make that change, right? The purchase order, which we did to Dell, right? And away we go. Okay, well, we... The purchase order, we need to find out whether this... Again, we're bringing it to you, saying it needs border rules over $15,000. So with that said, I would respectfully ask the board if you would authorize us to proceed and release the purchase order to move from ASIGRA to Dell for backup software.
I'll take that motion. I'll second.
Any questions?
Mr. Smith?
All right. Thank you, Rick. Debbie, please call the roll.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Dr. Colvin?
Yes.
Mrs. Stanford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Brisbane?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Thank you. Again, same situation with the Wi-Fi licensing. The company is Aruba, and Aruba doesn't sell directly. They use what are called VARs, value-added reseller. This is if you look at federal programs, they always use value-added resellers, and technically, that is the same as buying from a sole source. So you're buying basically directly from Aruba, but it's only from a VAR, and then the district picks which VAR they want, and you select them based on who has the best reputation, service, and those things. Again, this is an anticipated expense. We knew at some point we were going to have to add additional licensing for these buildings. We didn't do this earlier, because we don't want to overbuy the licenses, and until we moved everything around, and you remember, we should make a massive overhaul in our IT program, all of the move from iPads to Chromebooks, and so we know now what the remaining licenses... Licensing cost will be. It's tucked in the budget, tucked in the licensing thing, but it's over $15,000. Stop the purchase and bring it to the board to ask you to authorize release of that purchase order. We can bring up the access points licenses and turn on the Wi-Fi to both of the new schools.
Excellent. Second.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is this Aruba company, is this Yellow Dog Network, is one of their value-added resource?
Yes, it is.
And then my question is, is that with licensing with the two schools that we closed, so I'm sort of wondering, how is that going to come out of?
We've already moved those, and it's just a matter of adding additional licenses.
So it doesn't get cheaper, because we're closing two schools?
No, we've already absorbed those, or they moved into the whole bunch, but the number of students, the design of the Chromebooks, where we have a classroom set for every elementary building, is different than having, you know, just 24 here. So when you go through the number of classrooms that we have in 16, the licensing need just grew, but we did... That's a good question. We did transfer the licenses from those two schools.
Any other questions? Debbie, please call the roll.
Dr. Colvin?
Yes.
Mrs. Stanford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Brisbane?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Thank you. The next few items... I never thought I'd get here to talk about these. I want to remind you that officially, formally, and legally, the timeline for the district to take possession of the buildings and to have the furniture in the rooms was August 14. That's what we went into this knowing. We got them August the 14th. That's a big push to get staff in and do everything in four days, but that was the timeline. The brass ring for us is to get what is called a certificate for occupancy. If you don't have a certificate for occupancy, you cannot allow children in a building. So in the school business, that's really bad, and that has been the target all along, is we're not finished until we have that certificate, and it comes out of the legal department at City Hall, and it won't get into the maze that is required for that certificate. These resolutions are really not required of the school district. If you read the ordinances by the letter, because we are a school district and a taxing entity, we're not required to do this. However, the city can demand... They can make that a requirement. They chose to do so because they want to show the private sector that they are holding the school district to the same level of accountability that they do the private sector. Not many problem with that. It's just that it came to us very, very late in the game, and we've unraveled this and put it together. So really, this was not expected and, A, not necessarily required. I'll tell you just a little bit about Carden Park. Talked to Fred over the last two weeks. I kept saying, "Tomorrow, I'm going to write a memo for you and update everything on the schools." Well, I've never seen so many balls in the air at one time, and two more being added, and as two more come off, and this has just gone on in real time. As soon as we write something, they update it, and so we've just held off until today, and here's what we can report. On Carden Park, the building is officially released today from the general contractor to the school district. It is ours. It has met what is called substantial completion. There are a few things that still need to be done. They will be done by contract. However, with the gym, the wood is going to be delivered relatively soon to both schools. You can't find an installer of wood gym floors that will do the work and bring it in unless you agree to the acclamation period of the wood adjusting to the HVAC environments in the building. When you're doing construction and the doors are open and people are coming, you can't stabilize the building, and you can't get the humidity out, and you can't control it. So until you can control the building, the accesses, and control the HVAC, you aren't going to get the wood in for the gym floors. So relatively quickly, now that we have the buildings in our possession, the HVAC systems are balanced and in play, the wood product comes in, sits for two weeks, and two weeks to install and seal. Both building principals are aware. They have plenty of outdoor space and commons areas, and not using the gym for a few weeks will not be any hindrance to us operating the school. Carden Park has passed the final city inspection. That's how you get to the brass ring. It has passed. With your passing of the resolution, signing of the resolution, and Mr. Silkot walking that to City Hall, he'll leave with a certificate of occupancy for Carden Park. It's over. We got it. Importantly, for us, is registration is tomorrow.
Oh, he's very important.
Now, we had assumed that we might have to have a table out by the door.
Because someone could go in there.
Because you can't let kids come in. We could let mom, couldn't let kid. But let's take care of it. That's behind us. We're finished with it. The Oak Grove, that building, Oak Grove has been released to the St. Joseph School District. The fire system, an issue with handicap parking, and Cook Road, the final two inches of asphalt being laid on Cook Road as we speak. Four inches was laid, the final two. The city is inspecting fire handicap Cook Road this afternoon. I anticipate then we'll have the final inspection signed off tomorrow morning, and we'll receive the certificate of occupancy for Oak Grove. The issue with fire suppression in Cook Road. Cook Road, by code, has to be able to withstand the weight of a fire truck. That's the six inches of asphalt. So file two today. And remember, the target for all of this was August the 14th. That's when this stuff was supposed to all be finished, and so we are just pushing for value-added for our staff. Okay? So we are going to get the occupancy license there as well, which means tomorrow they should pull all those road signs.
Yeah!
Oh, yeah, call the neighbor association tonight and let them know that if you have a friend that's more involved.
No more speed bumps.
But that comes with the condition. The city's starting tomorrow at 169 and Cook, and they're going to pave the whole thing down to Riverside. But they're going to do a lane at a time, because it's overlay. So it's not new construction. So that street...
I mentioned about a month ago at our last meeting that I have a nephew that has been pushing on me. Would you mind giving him?
Yes, I would very much.
Excellent.
Officially. At Oak Grove, again, we have the gym area, some work to be done on the commons area, early childhood and the kitchen. None of those impedes us from receiving the occupancy license. And again, they'll be done in a few days, and so it's not an issue for us. They'll be finished. So with that said, we are... We're in line then to have the registration with no issues at both schools. Here's what we were really after. The four days is, I think, would be very difficult on our staff, so we've been pushing and pushing and pushing for the value-added. Chris is going to call principals of each school this afternoon and tell them that the kindergarten and first grade rooms, those require the most setup, even more materials. Those two rooms are available for teachers at both sites to go in and set the rooms up tomorrow. It's nine days early. Nine days early from the 14th, so it's really 13 days early from official contract time. All teachers are authorized to go in and start putting up their bulletin boards and anything they want on the wall as of tomorrow morning. They just... When they come in with the boxes to do the furniture, they will let them do that part, but they can get in and do all these other things that they need to do. So full access by our staff. I think they're going to be very, very excited about that, and it takes a lot of pressure off of them. If I were a teacher and had a new room handed to me in four days, you know, it should be pretty difficult. You make sacrifices if you're in a brand-new building, but they shouldn't have to make any sacrifices here. One last thing I want to tell you, that the... Remember, we started out with about $4.5 million required for Cook Road construction. The final total is $755,000.
Wow.
So you know what kind of road we had to go through that, and that's money that will be left in the bond account for use for Lafayette Air Conditioning or other things that the board and administration agreed to do with those funds. Chris Silkot, I... We were blessed with an organized, knowledgeable man who's on boots-on-the-ground every day at these schools, and without Chris Silkot, we wouldn't be where we are. That's fact, and I...
All the teachers thanking you too, that way. Did it early and...
Only have one last question. Anything for the board that's never built two at the same time? Especially when you don't know what you're doing for something.
But now we do.
We're good now. We could do three.
We're good now.
I think we can do three. We're all down. I'm going to retire.
Please do.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve both of the resolutions. Second.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Don't bring that up for me.
No, no, no. I just want to reiterate a few things, that Rick and Chris think things are all their worth, but to make sure, as I've sent out an email to you, that so that the board understands and has a clear understanding that all this remaining work that you're saying you're committing to do and committing yourselves to do, taking out of our money, if you will, rather than the contractors, realize that every bit of the work that remains to be done is covered if something would happen with either one of these contractors. And as I said in my email, but it's so your own, their reputations are on the line, they're local, they've got a wonderful job for you and for the students and teachers and staff of the community. All of those items are covered by payment and performance bond, so in the odd event, in a remote, remote event, something didn't come through, and they didn't finish it, we're covered. Okay, that's number one. Two, the only reason that we extended it out to May of next year for completion date, I want to make sure nobody thinks that we're holding off on any of these other improvements, is just that we may not be able to do some landscaping now, because you could be killing the plants by planting them now rather than in the spring. The other thing is, is that follow-up on what Rick said was that the ordinances require a private developer to post a, either a cash or assurance bond to do these kinds of things. Fortunately, in the ordinances, there's a statement that says that federal tax payer in either day can commit the fund, and that's what you would be doing by this. And we are fortunate that we developed the relationship we did with the city going back way, way early with everybody on the negotiating team, for lack of a better term, to develop the goodwill of the city, because with Rick and Chris and everybody else on your team, we were able to get these resolutions finished in a very quick fashion and get them approved by the city. So it was a win-win effort, and I just want to make sure you understand that if something didn't get finished, it's not coming out of your pocket eventually, but these are able, reputable contractors, and they will get it done. So if you have any questions on the legal side, I'll know.
And the pushing that date back is failure to comply is forfeiting the occupancy license. So they started off with the day of, you know, November. Well, we don't anticipate anything. We're not going to take a chance of losing occupancy in an old school year, so push the thing back. You just... You got to hedge your bet here. Two quick final things on construction. One, part of the OCD in me wanted everything to be finished the first day of school, the grass, the bushes, the trees, everything. Well, that's not possible with school construction and in Missouri. This is normal. We don't know normal, because we haven't done it. You get the building finished for the first day of school. It's too hot to do all of the landscaping pieces. That happens in September. They water and all those things. In the September, first week of October, you're going to see a different-looking site. It's just impossible, again, with school schedules, school calendars, and Missouri construction season, to have it go any other way, so you'll see the beautification. The reason that we're here giving people 13 days, nine days earlier from the contract, 13 days total, is because I'm convinced your desire and our ability to implement local architects, local general contractors, and 24 or 25 local subcontractors. Steve said that they have pride in what they do, they're answerable to the community, they wanted it to happen, and they made sure that it happened. I know you've been following the erosion issues that we have had at Carden Park. While the site was challenging, it's not been nearly as challenging as we were told it was going to be. Site development was nothing compared to the cost of trying to buy or acquire 17 acres inside an urban city. The civil engineers designed the water management in compliance with Missouri DNR code for the 100-year rain and etc. Well, we didn't get that. We got the 500, and what happened is it didn't come all at once. We got two inches of rain, three days later, two inches of rain, four days later, two inches of rain, one and a half. It overwhelmed some of the water control designs. Okay? So with that said, might as well get it done now in five... We keep our buildings a long time, so 500 years from now, they won't have to address this problem, because it's set for whatever comes, okay? And that was a change order for about $45,000, and so anyway, and the neighbors are pleased.
So what are they doing?
Well, they had to go in... The size of the boulders and rock and things, they had to increase and expand the field in how that was in place, and they had to go in and actually, with mortar-type materials, secure some of that base so that it can't erode under, and some lining, so it can't cut under it and move, which it did. But it was designed properly. It isn't an issue that it wasn't designed correctly. It was. It was just overwhelmed by Mother Nature. So again, having that completed, we won't have to revisit it. One of the city attorneys lives at the bottom of Hill where the water comes, and he's really excited about that , too, so we're glad to hear that. Thank you for your support on those resolutions.
Debbie, any further questions?
Dr. Colvin?
Yes.
Mrs. Stanford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Brisbane?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
The preschool furniture, okay, this is exactly the same thing, it's over $15,000. This one's a sole-source provider. This is the only company that makes this. We want and need consistency in our product. We have used this company in our other preschool rooms. We have a lot of mobility, and we, for quality control purposes, we want to have the same product in our buildings that we have elsewhere. And so these items, again, are over the $15,000. I did not put... And at the time we made this decision, we hadn't come to I did not put, and at the time we made this decision, we hadn't come to recognize that sole source provider, I mean, think of the years we purchased from Apple Computer. It's in the budget, we're going to buy this stuff, but we didn't bring every purchase order back to you from Apple Computer, their sole source provider. Well, we're obviously restructuring that thinking and how we are proceeding. So I didn't put this furniture in the general furniture bid because all that was going to happen was SSI, one of the other companies, was going to add a 15% markup on value of an annual for us. So they wanted to do that, I wasn't willing to do it. Why go that route? It's going to save us some money. So wrote the purchase order to a sole source provider. We stopped it and it's here today. And if you are willing to authorize the release of that, we have guarantee from the company. We'll have the furniture in August the 11th. We'll have the rooms ready for the first day of school.
I'm assuming it's bonded money?
Yeah, all the furniture is bonded, yes.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Chairman? First and second, is there any questions?
There are three preschool rooms. That's why there's three of each thing?
No, there's two preschool rooms. Three is just the number that they think with the students and. Well, Brian, you want to address that some activities and.
Well, there are three preschool rooms. We moved the high intensity out there.
Okay, okay.
Great. I don't know much about it, so I just, great.
I'm thinking the two that were designated on the blueprint, but that's right, they added a different room, another room.
That makes sense.
Any other questions? All right, Debbie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Danforth?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Crisman?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Dr. Cogan?
Thank you for supporting us as we work through how to adjust our bidding and purchasing processes. Two things will come to you, well, three things will come to you in August. What you know about is as they punch the holes through Mark Plaine to finalize the air conditioning work, we found the entire roof inside the insulation is something where there's no indications of it, can't find it, there's no collateral damage, but we have to take care of it or we will have significant collateral damage. That's going to be about $47,000. We'll bring that to you in August. About $47,000. Got to open it up and take it all out. The other, the electronic signs, the color, visual signs that will go at each school, got to have all the grading, everything in place before you go in and put some of these final amenities in, but the, those bids will come to you in August. And then I'm going to ask Chris just quickly to tell you about the playgrounds. The playgrounds come in last after everything again has been finalized, if you drop those in and he's got some really neat looking pictures to show you.
On the last Thursday, we received proposals from six different companies. Now, this is only a representation from two companies. So we went last Thursday and then Mr. Schindorff himself from Houston, Mr. Otto and Ms. Adams looked at these proposals and then they've taken their information back. And I told them neither Ron and I want to pick out the playground equipment. And so I believe that probably Mr. Otto and Ms. Adams will choose what they like the best. We'll look at the dollar amounts and then we'll bring it to you in August.
And Chris, I want to say from your, looking at the numbers, it looks like it'll fall in line with what we'd anticipated.
Yeah, it's all within the budget. And I think really all of the proposals, I haven't had a chance to really go through them, but from all six companies, they're all pretty close.
And again, bond issue money.
Yes. In bond money, yes. And so the really difference is you see is between these two, it's just the type of ground cover. This is a tile. This is ported place.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask.
Yeah.
I want to.
According to the research we've done, really, they're both very durable.
And these meet all the requirements for.
Meets ADA. I mean, we went through this with a fine, we spent a lot of time with the specs on this because one thing we found out about playground equipment is there is no apples to apples. Each company's different, you know, the size of the diameters of the support, it's all different.
Which can we support maintenance-wise as a school district?
I mean, we have this product at several buildings and we have no problems with them. The city has ported place. From what I understand from them is they've been very happy with it. I think it's win-win either way you go.
I've had some dealings with this stuff. The ones over here, part of the problem is at night when some kids are there, they're not in school. In a couple of places, we, I've been on the Bodhi Trust and we've done this and they would take some of the tiles apart on this. Even our, I really think that's, that looks better. But the port at the bottom seems to be a little better.
Yeah, we've not ever used a port in place, but.
Have you had problems with them or like taking pieces out of the?
I don't know that we really had any problem with that. We've been very successful with the tile that we have placed. So far, we haven't had any problems with that. I'm aware of that.
Looks fun.
Just, you know, some of those things we have to tie together as we finish up the schools, as Rick said, we'll also bring in. The monument signs, actually, that will be sold till September. Getting ready to write the specs on those down and meeting with the different companies here in town and make sure we can get apples to apples with them.
So we're looking at, you're going to present us the bids at our next meeting and then how long will it take them to put these in?
The lead time is on the equipment, I believe is about four weeks. The bid documents state that they have to be invited by November 1st and what I've heard from all the companies that bid, that won't be a problem.
So they can't put them in yet because they're still in construction. That's the last thing.
Sure.
Very good. Any other questions?
One last, I forgot so many notes here. If you see any member of our warehouse through, pat them on the back, they moved 140 teachers in a short period of time. And all of the materials and everything for those teachers at the two new schools are sitting in their rooms already. I mean, it's all there, they just need the furniture. But 140 rooms, we usually do three or four at the start of school. So this is unprecedented for us.
All right. Next item was just some dates, coming dates. Is there anything else? Or anything about it? Second. Debbie, please call the roll.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Danforth?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Crisman?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
You're released.